I'd like to call to order the May 17th School Board Legislative Meeting. If we could please stand for the flag salute. And we will have an executive session after this for legal and personnel matters. Up first, we have a presentation from the music department. And Ms. Cantor is going to introduce them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to introduce to you two distinguished members of our music department here in the Hattborough-Horsham School District, John Sedlasic and Chris Kazinski.
Hi, I'll tell you what, it's kind of exciting to be the first live thing in this district in the last year and a half. And music has been very strong during all of these things. And at first, it was tough. But I gotta say, what we are doing with music has shown just how important it is for these kids and what they've done and how they've learned to work together and build community. And the stuff that they've learned blows my mind. In many ways, we've actually exceeded things we've done in the past, which is incredible. The connections we've made is amazing, and the kids are just so much fun. So we actually planned on doing a presentation when it was gonna be virtual, but now we're live, so you get to see our videos. And Mr. Kazinski, he'll finish up at the end. So with that, if whoever's pressing play back there, it'll be awesome.
One, three, one. It's magic.
Before going virtual, everything was all about excitement, getting the kids pumped up, giving them the high fives, getting them excited to want to practice, being on a stage and performing, seeing the gleam in their eyes and seeing how excited they are when their parents and their friends are applauding for them. So that's the big change.
Going from in-person to virtual last year, I had finally come up with, here's a good basis of how I teach. And then we go to virtual and I have to completely redo the whole thing. One, two, ready violins and violas. And that connection piece was more difficult. So it was much more about, how do I maintain those connections in the larger group? How do I plan music that all of the students are going to enjoy and get something out of when they're at so many different levels? Because I was so used to being able to walk over to this student and help them with this specific thing and that student with that specific thing. So those were my biggest challenges.
I think a lot of what we did was very similar to what we had done in person. The only thing that would be maybe problematic was when we were playing together. You know, we were always off by a beat just because of the transfer from back and forth. But you kind of learned how to figure that out along the way, and you were able to, you know, practice and work that way. I know I could. And the students, they just felt it was great.
That was lovely. Thank you, Molly, for that.
You're welcome.
I'll have four or five kids on a screen at one time, and they're all muted. And we would just, I would play, they would copy back. A lot of times, I would make a student be the teacher to try to help eliminate the delay, which was a major concern. So I'd have everyone muted except for one student. I'd make them count the kids off, and they would try to match their plans. So that way, I could assess what they're doing, and everybody else could be playing the entire time, so there's no downtime for any students. So that was a good thing.
We have access to an online practice software called Smart Music. And that software became central to how I taught last year. And this year, it was a huge support. Because I'd figured out more this year, it wasn't as central, but it definitely helped boost what I was doing with my students. In particular, this year, for orchestra, I was using, and by orchestra, I mean all of the instruments together, not just in their individual lessons. It helped give them a sense of all playing together, even though they're in their separate homes, they're listening to the entire orchestra at the same time through that software, which is an opportunity they wouldn't have had without that software.
Pretty much, I'll use either me playing, or I'll play on a piano, or I'll have Smart Music play, and they would just play back. And I would, where it was kind of positive is that I was teaching them how to break things up on their own. So I'm like, okay, let's work on this measure, do it a couple times. Now, do the next measure, let's put them together. So they learn the strategies on how to break things apart better, which hopefully got them to become better musicians, which is a positive.
Students have learned a lot virtually. You know, I think they look forward to the lesson. We had really great attendance. They're, I mean, it was really, really well received. And I think the students built that confidence. They had control of what they wanted to do. If I said, look, we're gonna do this for next week, they took care of that. They had that control. I think it built their confidence along the way. Now that I see them in person, I feel like they're carrying that confidence, and they just feel really good about what they're doing. And that's why we're here.
Band makes me feel happy because I love a new experience.
I like band because it is fun and I love learning new things.
I like band because it gave me a chance to do a new thing that I never thought I could do.
I like learning new notes in band. It makes me really happy when I learn a new note.
Pretty much now, the kids come in, they have special instrument masks, and which, actually, they're coming in, so right now, we just have kids super far apart. And we're playing outside most of the time, but they have bell covers to keep things safe as well.
We have in-person lessons, and then we have virtual lessons for our students in Hatter Academy. And we have orchestra after school for everybody virtually, or band. I'm gonna try and have both of them at the same time and be able to, you know, look at my in-person students over here and my computer right here with my virtual students in their, in the gallery and try and talk to them at the same time. I'm going to be able to give my in-person students immediate feedback while I'm gonna have to kind of predict what's going on with my at-home students. I can have them turn their cameras on, and I can tell a lot by just watching them, but there's gonna be a couple of times where I'm gonna have to ask them, hey, how did that go?
We have, you know, some small groups, we've been outdoors. For me, you know, standing in front of, you know, five trombone players, it's been fantastic. It reminds me of when, you know, I was in the marching bands, it reminds me of when I was doing these things in high school. And you get this sense of community, this sense of togetherness, and you just start to have this sort of back and forth that you didn't necessarily have online.
You know, every year, you think, you can't learn anything new. And you do. And you reflect back and think about the things that I did 10 years ago, 15 years, 26 years ago. It's so different, so different. And you keep getting better and better and better. And using technology in a different way, ways to save time. And like I said, using Flipgrid, using the Smart Music, living and dying on Canvas. I never thought that I would want to use Canvas as much as I do, but it's amazing, you know? Okay, let's post some music there, go ahead, go get it, give me things back. The communication between students and parents is so much more. And that's something that's gonna change once life gets back to normal. That's something that's gonna stay there.
I received many emails from students and parents telling me how much they appreciated having music. When everything else was all over the place and unpredictable, and there was very little consistency from week to week, they could rely on having strings, they could rely on having their music time, they had something to do with themselves while they were home all day. So many of my students just practiced because they had nothing else to do necessarily.
I want the public to know is that this is something we need, this is something your kid needs. Because music is part of your soul and the way to connect, and that's the thing that's missing in society right now. So play an instrument. It is safe. And thank you for that. I do want to say that Mrs. Trock, our string specialist, has a concert this evening. She was unable to attend, but you did see her in the video. I just want to thank a lot of the parents and the caregivers out there that really helped get our students ready. Whether it was a music stand, whether it was the instrument, it was this sort of backstage show that went on every lesson, week to week. And that, we really, really appreciate the people getting those students ready and getting them prepared so that they could be successful. I'm not gonna take any more of your time. I appreciate you guys watching the video, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment on any agenda items as governed by Board Policy 006. If there's anyone who would wish to speak to an agenda item, we ask that you please come in and sign in on the sheet located in the front of the auditorium. Your name will then be called in order that your name appears on the sheet. And once your name is called, please come to the microphone, and you can speak for three minutes there. Just state your name, address, municipality of residence prior to speaking, and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, doesn't look like there's anyone that wants to make a public comment. We move on to item four, approval of the April 19th Legislative Action Minute Meetings and the May 3rd Work Session and Committee Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, move on to the consent agenda items. Item A, bills for approval and voided checks. B, budget transfer and adjustment reports. C, capital projects reports. D, childcare programs. E, food services report. F, payroll reports. G, student activities report. H, student scholarship memorial report. I, tax collectors report. J, treasurers financial reports. I'm looking for a motion to approve items A through J.
This is DJ, so moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Is there any discussion on those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Human Resources Action Items. Item A, Certified Staff. B, Support Staff. And C, Act 93 Agreement. I'm looking for a motion on items A through C.
So moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven A and B Special Services Action Items. Looking for a motion on those items?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Business Office Action Items. Eight A, PDE 4605 residences. B, PlanCon K Approval. C, Approval of the Creation of Medical Rate Self-Insurance Fund. D, Property Tax Rebate Program. E, 2021-22 Proposed Final Budget. We have a presentation on that. And F, Approval of the 2021-2022 Purchase Orders. And MCIU Bid Approval. We wanna do the presentation on the budget?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of this evening is to provide the board, sorry about that, and the community with a financial summary of the 2021-2022 Proposed Final Budget, or what's otherwise known as the preliminary budget adoption. So if we take a look at the expenditure side of the budget, can you go back one, Angel? You'll see that our overall budget, as of May 17th, is set at a little over $115 million. This represents an overall dollar increase of about $2.6 million from the current year budget, 2.3% overall increase. Next slide. Take a look at the revenue side of the budget. This is before factoring in any increase, tax increases or millage increases. We're projecting an increase in budgeted revenues of a little over $1 million, a little less than 1%. So if you take the overall increase on the expenditure side combined with the projected increase in revenues, you'll see that it leaves us with a budget shortfall of a little over $1.5 million. And the millage increase or tax increase that would be required to balance the budget at this point would be a little over 2%. As many of you know, as we all know, for the past nine months, we've been working on developing and balancing the budget within the Act 1 Index, which is currently set at 3% for next year. And I think we've done a pretty good job to date in developing a budget that meets all of our educational and operational priorities. And it's currently 1% lower than the established index. And as we move forward over the next month leading into final adoption in June, we're gonna continue to work on getting those totals down even further. So as far as if we were to actually pass the final budget in June at these levels, the average, the impact to the average Hattborough homeowner would be about $74.61. The average Horsham increase would be about $112. And for every $100,000 of assessed value, it'd be $61.60. And again, this is as of today, preliminary adoption, and those numbers will hopefully be lower come June. Next slide. This one's a little bit hard to read, but I think it's important to note that since the inception of Act 1, 15 years ago, our district has regularly and every year balanced our budget at or below the Act 1 Index. And it's hard to read, but you can see at the bottom of the screen, I think, the overall average increase over that time in the Act 1 Index is about 2.59%, while our district's average annual increase has been about 2.2%. We're also, in all years since the inception, our district has never sought exceptions to increase our millage and tax rate above the index, and we're one of the very few districts in the state that can make that claim over this period of time. So just think it's important to note. Next slide, the other way.
Can you repeat, can you repeat what you just said? Said, we are one of the very few districts in the state, and then I lost.
Okay, I'm sorry. I seem to say, we're one of the very few districts in the state that since the inception of Act 1, 15 years ago, have always passed a budget that has been at or below the Act 1 Index that had been established by the state. We've also never sought exceptions to increase our budget above the Act 1 Index, and we're one of the very few districts in the state that can make that claim. Okay, this is a little tough to read, too. But I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about COVID relief funding. Because this is funding that we anticipate receiving that's gonna have a very positive impact on the district financially going forward. And I know this is hard to read, but the one to try to show and talk a little bit about is, more specifically, the amount of funds that we intend to receive, which I believe is a little bit under $6 million, about $5.9 million. The left-hand column is all the sources of grant funding that will be providing those funds. And also, the middle column, which I believe is about $1.1 million, shows how much we've received to date. And then the other column talks about how much, or shows how much, we've expended to date. And when it comes to expending these funds, our focus will be, and will continue to be, on expending these funds very strategically and responsibly, meaning that we're gonna use these funds on supplies, services, equipment, and programming that best meets our educational and operational needs and priorities. This includes technology devices for our students, infrastructure and network upgrades, equipment to improve our air quality and ventilation in our buildings, PPE, social worker services, curriculum materials, et cetera. And if it wasn't for this funding, a lot of these costs would have had to have been included in the general fund budget or expended out of our capital reserve account. So essentially, these funds will help minimize some of the tax increases to our residents and business owners. One important point to note, though, is one of the areas in which we really don't want to focus on spending these funds is on recurring costs such as salary and benefit costs. As if we use these funds for those type of recurring costs, once they're depleted, it would simply create a financial hole or a deficit to deal with in the future. So when I talk about expending funds strategically, responsibly, we want to avoid doing that. So we're gonna continue, and we have time. These funds will be coming to the district over the course of the next few years. We've received some already, as noted. So there'll be a lot of planning and work to do on allocating these funds going forward. So again, over the course of the next month and leading up until final budget adoption, as always, we're gonna continue to look for ways to reduce our millage impact to the community. At our final budget presentation, probably talk a little bit more about the Homestead-Farmstead Property Tax Relief Funds that have been confirmed, which will help reduce property taxes to all of our resident homeowners. And also, we'll talk a little bit more about the expansion of the state's property tax relief program tonight, which will also provide some added relief to our low-income families in the community. So I think that's for my presentation. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Recker, I do have a question. Just to confirm and to reiterate, the millage rate that you had up there, which was, what was the?
The millage?
The increase.
The increase is 2.05%.
2.05%. But you're still continuing your work to get that lower if possible.
Correct.
Thank you.
Always plenty of work done in the last few weeks of any budget cycle. So we're gonna continue to go through and identify areas where we can reduce costs, but again, focusing on making sure all of our educational and operational needs are met, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work and your committee's work, too. Appreciate it.
Yep. As always, the budget process is a collaborative, collective work, as I say, with everyone involved, so a lot of good work from a lot of good people. Thanks, Monica.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for Business Office Action Items A through G?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion around those items? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now gonna move to our committee reports. Ms. Hussin Yerhoff, do you have a curriculum committee report?
Yes, thank you. We met last week on May 11th, and we received a first preview of proposed meeting dates for next year. And the same as this year, they will be held on the second Tuesdays of the month, except for the Tuesday that bumps up onto spring break 2022. The main event of our curriculum committee meeting was the Elementary Math Resource Adoption Recommendation from Dr. David Weber. And he is here tonight to tell you all what we heard about last Tuesday.
Thank you. One of the primary functions of the curriculum committee each year is? Testing? Testing? Now?
All right. One of the primary functions of the curriculum committee each year is to review for the Board Curriculum Committee any recommendations that we make for resource adoption. And these are closely tied to our curriculum review cycles, which are closely tied to our budgets. As you would imagine, this past year presented some unique challenges in trying to pull people together and make good evaluations of curriculum resources. There was one particular resource that we could not afford to delay, and we put together a process to make a thorough review. So on behalf of the Board Curriculum Committee, I have the honor tonight of recommending for adoption the Bridges in Mathematics Series for our core instructional resource in mathematics in grades kindergarten through five. This resource is published by the Mathematics Learning Center. Bridges in Mathematics is a comprehensive K through five mathematics curriculum resource that will replace the everyday mathematics resources that have been in use for over a decade. Over the past few months, a committee of 17 teachers and administrators reviewed approximately 10 different resources. In the last month and a half, the list was narrowed down to four potential candidates that the committee felt were good fits for the philosophy of mathematics instruction the mathematics review committee laid out last year, and also because of their comprehensive coverage of the Common Core State Standards in Math. After piloting the resources and meeting with publishers and practitioners of the finalist resources, the committee unanimously recommended Bridges in Mathematics for adoption in Hattborough-Horsham School District. During the review, Bridges was recognized for its blend of direct instruction, structured investigation, and open exploration of mathematics. The lessons are characterized by extensive use of visual models and representation to build student conceptual understanding prior to introducing formal operations. There is a strong social component to these lessons, requiring students to work together and talk to each other about math. As we explored these resources, committee members were impressed at the way that students reported enthusiastically that while lessons were challenging, they found them engaging and full of learning. What educators call productive struggle, the sweet spot in a well-planned lesson, was again and again a hallmark of the Bridges resources and lessons we reviewed. Last week, a thorough overview of the recommendation and selection process was made for the curriculum committee. On June 7, we will ask for a formal board approval of these resources. There are samples of teacher and student materials available for you to review this evening if you'd like. I've left them to your right of the stage over there on a table not far from the flag. And those resources will also be available for review by any member of the public from now until June 7 in the curriculum office, where they can be viewed by appointment. Pending approval, we will work to acquire the materials, plan professional development for teachers, and provide resources and information to parents prior to the start of the next school year. Thank you for your consideration of this resource. Our review committee is very excited to make this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Weber. Be sure to check out this resource, it's pretty exciting to see. Our next meeting of the curriculum committee will be on Tuesday, June 8 at 3:00 p.m. And we're going meeting by meeting to determine where it will take place. So we decided that this next meeting will be held via Zoom for June. Thank you, that's it. Madam President. Thank you. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Coombs, do you have a facilities committee report?
No report.
Ms. McCouts, do you have a finance committee report?
Nothing bad.
Mr. Brown, do you have any HR committee reports?
The HR committee met prior to this meeting, primarily really to discuss the openings and what HR is currently working on to fill those vacancies.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz, do you have a policy committee report?
Yes, ma'am. The minutes from the April 7 meeting that we reported on previously are attached in your board docs. We did have a meeting on May 5. We reviewed some items that were asking for your approval. And then after which, I want to make sure I have some time just to quickly summarize the rest of the meeting. So having said that, the committee has met and reviewed the policy number 130, homework policy. And we're asking for a first read tonight. It was provided in the board docs and I believe emailed to you as well. So does anyone have any questions on this policy? Oh, and before we continue, I want to make sure that we all know that this is a homework policy platform. And we anticipate, and I'm looking at Dr. King, we anticipate ARs or administrative regulations that have more specifics and details as it pertains to grade levels. Is that appropriate to say? Having said that, does anyone have any questions? Madam President, can we ask for a first read approval?
Yes, so we're looking for approval on a first reading basis of policy 130, the homework policy, and approval on a second reading basis of policy 605, tax levy and district initiated appeals, and policy 718, commercial advertising partnership and sponsorships.
David Brown, so moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Is there any discussion on these policies? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Now move on to our liaison.
I had one more, I just wanted to summarize a little bit more. I'm sorry. And Dr. Taylor, we had a wonderful summary of the equity policy work that has been progressing. The Equity Committee met on the 12th with Dr. Heather Bennett from the PSBA. And we're gathering together a draft, preparing to share with, with the board and the public for input. So we don't have an exact date for that yet, but it is forthcoming and it's, it's coming quickly. So thank you for your patience on that. I think that's it.
All right, thank you. We now move on to our liaison reports. Eastern Center for Arts and Technology, Ms. Connor Holston.
DJ Schultz very nicely attended for me, so if she would take the microphone, that would be great.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Connor Holston. Yes, we had a wonderful meeting on, the May meeting of Eastern Center JOC. I'll just have a couple of highlights here. First and foremost, we are very, very proud to announce this May Student of the Month for the Eastern Center for the Arts and Technology was our very own Brianna Rios. She is in the Culinary Arts Program, and we are incredibly proud of her. There's only 10 students selected every year. So congratulations, Brianna, and best of luck in the future. We're also excited to report that there has been significant research in a new program that is possibly going to be offered in the 2022-2023 school year. And that is an exercise and sports science program, which they're investigating. And it sounds incredibly exciting. Other, other centers have done this and have been very popular. And they've actually surveyed many of the, I think it's the ninth, eighth and ninth theaters about the interest in that, and it's, it's very high. So that's going to be really exciting. We also want to congratulate the gold medal winners at the Skills USA State Competition. There have been three this year, Ben Hoffman, Nicole Klaske, and Kayla Marshall. We also had a significant number of silver and bronze. So Eastern did a wonderful, wonderful job. Congratulations to, to all of them. The rest, I don't want to read it all, but the rest of the board brief, thank you, has been attached in the board doc, so you can review at your leisure. And I appreciate the opportunity to, to pro temp for you, Tara, and looking forward to doing it again. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, do you have a federal programs report?
Yes, good evening, Madam President. We are in the midst of planning the Summer Academy Program for the students in Haprow-Horsham who participate in the Title I Reading and Math Enrichment Program. To date, our response has been not as, as large as we had anticipated and that we've experienced in previous years. We think that may be in conjunction with some fatigue caused by the pandemic, but we do anticipate a robust program that will operate this summer. And that ends my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Ms. Brown, do you have a PSBA report?
PSBA members, we're asking you to join PSBA and public school leaders across the state on Tuesday, May 25, 2021 at 9:30 a.m. to send a clear message to the General Assembly. The message is, the time is now for the charter school reform. The rally will include speakers, updates, and tools you can use to reach out to your legislators. This is a complimentary members event only. It's being held at the Capitol, but you can join the virtual rally at the charter reform. I also want to encourage PSBA members, school directors for cross-district networking and discussions on education hot topics, legislative updates, and advocacy strategies every third Thursday of the month through June. The exchange will be held via Zoom meeting at 12:30 p.m. The next meeting is May 20th. And following that, the last meeting will be June 17, 2021. And that concludes my message.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I will now give the MCIU report. At each of your seats, you should have a ballot that is for electing individuals for a three-year term and a two-year term to the MCIU board. I just ask that you fill it out tonight and then give it to Mr. Reichert, once you've filled it out. This month at our meeting, we did welcome Sarah Evans-Brockett as the new representative from the Perkyomin Valley School District. And Mr. Sultanic, our solicitor, reported that all of the constituent school districts voted overwhelmingly to approve the MCIU 2021-2022 Membership Services Budget. And we did have a member of our staff get recognized. The patent consultant, Dr. Nicole Holland-Sims, and Ms. Amira Hill-Yancy were recipients of the 2021 Moral and Courageous Commitment to Equity Educator Award and were honored at a ceremony on April 22nd. And that is my report. Dr. Evislad, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I have a few updates. First, some COVID-19 updates. From a public health metrics perspective, the numbers continue to decline for the fourth week in a row, which is great news. The positivity rate has dipped below 5% and is at, currently at 3.8% in the county, with an incidence rate at 52.5. This is important because it's the lowest that we've had since October 22, which is nice. We hope that this downward trend for four weeks certainly continues. Also, last week marked the emergency approval of the Pfizer vaccine for children ages 12 and up. There are opportunities abound for students to get the vaccine. We sent a communication home to share opportunities for families to pursue the vaccine, should they choose to. We have many community partners that have helped us provide access to the vaccine for families who are interested. That information is on our website, and any of our staff can help with that as well. Today, at the high school, we had the second dose of the vaccine for students that were participating in our vaccination clinic offered here at the school. That was originally for students ages 16 and up. We had roughly 400 participants today in that clinic. Also, last week, the CDC issued some revised guidance for masking and distancing that includes some relaxation of the masking guidelines for fully vaccinated individuals. Since then, the CDC has come out and clarified that they are not planning on updating school guidance prior to the end of the school year. With most students at the secondary level and all students at the elementary level not fully vaccinated, the CDC is recommending for schools to maintain their current mitigation strategies. They are, however, putting together guidance for camps and summer programs, and that should be released very soon. We can confidently say that our indoor mitigation strategies particularly will remain as is for the remaining few weeks of the school year. And I just want to, again, share how well the students have done at cooperating with those mitigation strategies. As we plan for our end-of-the-year graduation and promotion ceremonies, those culminated events are being modified to reflect the most recent guidance. We are looking to, for our celebrations, excuse me, and celebrations to be mostly held outside, which allows the community to bring the most number of people together for those celebrations. School principals will be communicating those details around each of those culminated events. I'd like to congratulate and thank the Education Foundation for putting on a wonderful walk this weekend, that threw both Horsham and Haprow. It was a great family and community event for a very good cause. Thank you to our sponsors, the community members, our volunteers and participants. It was a really nice event, beautiful weather. It was a great, great time to be with the family, supporting the foundation for a great cause. And finally, off of kudos to our spring hatter athletes. We had two Suburban One champions, the softball team and our boys' track team, clinched the Suburban One Liberty Division Championships. And we also have other hatters pursuing secondary, I'm sorry, postseason in track. And our baseball team is also in the playoffs. So congratulations to our spring hatter athletes. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Evislad. We now move to the second public comment section. If you wish to make a public comment, we just ask that you come, please sign in on the sheet located at the front of the auditorium, and your name will be called in the order that your name appears on the signing sheet. Once your name is called, we ask you to come to the microphone that is located in the front of the auditorium to speak. Please state your name, address, and municipality residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any members wishing to speak? Are there any comments from board members or any further comments from the superintendent?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Sidlasic and Mr. Kuzinski and the rest of the music department for their presentation today and keeping music going through the, the virtual situation that we had. And, and the, the video they put together was inspiring. So I'm glad that we had the opportunity to maintain that program.
Dr. King, do you mind if I mention the Penny Pack celebration? I want to thank the administrators and teachers and parents and everyone who called Penny Pack their homeschool. And I know there's a committee working on a celebration finally, now that we are able to get together and really celebrate the school, the people, the teachers, the students. And I believe that's happening on, do we, do we have a date? Is it, it's June 12? It's June 12, and I think there'll be more details to follow. But I want to thank you in advance for everyone's work and collaborative work. And we're going to send off Penny Pack with a great celebration. I hope everyone can attend. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, then I am looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and that is our meeting for tonight.